All right, welcome back to the meeting. We are done with executive session and we are ready to continue on with our agenda tonight. Just a reminder for everyone that this open portion of the meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV. Copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through central office. We will move on to agenda item number two, which is the Burtonazi Teacher of the Year nominees and recognition.
Dr. Kinsigley is grabbing Senator Burtonazi in company.
Where is he?
I think he's talking to Attorney Murray.
All right. How long's your update?
About ten minutes.
How old are you? Lisa was there. We're ready for you right away.
Where am I? Over here? Right there, yeah? No, no. I'm on my own. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. So, I guess in 1997, my father organized the Senator Louis P. Burtonazi Foundation to celebrate culture, education, and citizenship. Shortly thereafter, the Senator Louis P. Burtonazi Foundation Outstanding Teacher Award was born. And since that time and through this award, we have been recognizing one of the outstanding teachers annually in our school system. And we are pleased to say that we are selecting another winner this year. This is truly a community award. We encourage members of the community to recommend candidates for nomination. The award winner is ultimately selected by a committee that is made up entirely of members of our community at large. We rely heavily on our school community to help us get through this process. And of course, we are incredibly grateful to this committee, to the Office of the Superintendent, to our school principals, to the school councils in the various buildings, and to the school community as a whole in helping to preserve the tradition of this award. So with that said, and without further ado, it is my privilege to introduce you to some of our nominees and our award winner. And I can't see anymore, so if you'll just bear with me one second.
As you're getting your glasses out, we're gonna take some pictures right afterward with the school community, the school community. So don't run out.
So with us this evening are Carrie Ventura Austin, who is our nominee from Shining Star, and Laura Nadolsky, who is our nominee from Brookside Elementary School. Do you want to come up? Yeah.
Come up?
Yeah, sure.
Catherine Andrews, who is our nominee from Woodland, was not able to make it this evening. Lisa Rizzoli, who was our nominee from Stacy Middle School, was not able to join us this evening. We have Nicholas Bolinari, who is our nominee from Milford High School.
And Dr. Bolinari had a sick child at home.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I haven't started. And of course, our nominee for Memorial and our winner, this is our 25th year, our award winner is Christine Skiba from Memorial. So I guess we have some photo opportunities, or are we doing that later?
Maybe Christine can speak for a little bit.
Speaking parts always, the attention is always overwhelming to me, but I'm really, really honored. And I know I spoke briefly at the award ceremony. This is not a job that you can do by yourself. I had so many people pulling me along along the way and influencing me and supporting me with every single thing that I did that I feel like this really should go to, you know, 25 people because it is such a job that we need to build a community with. So just thank you so much, we're very honored.
So why don't we get the Burtonazi boys? And maybe this, this will come in the chair and vice chair? Maybe all our nominees first, and then we'll do one with the, sort of bring them together? Yeah, we'll do it right there. Yes. If you guys want to take pictures, feel free.
I don't want to upstage them.
I thought, I thought about it after he started.
Did you go to Vosse?
I'm thinking about that.
No, I didn't.
What do you do before bed? Have you tried to sleep now?
I'm doing my own, you're on your own.
There's no, only trance allowed in my robe.
It's good to make everything off, it's like, it's your superpower.
Otherwise, I never sleep.
What are you doing?
All right, ready? One, two, three, too late.
You guys are welcome to stay, we have four or five hours until the end of this. But you're also welcome to leave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, I would like to file out, that brings us to next agenda item, which is the student rep update from PD. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you guys, I haven't been here in a while, sorry about that. So first thing, fall sports are done, every fall sport is done. Winter sports have started, most of us have started our preseason. Regular season starts after Thanksgiving. And then radium girls is being performed by the Theater Workshop at the Milford High School on November 22nd, so that's tomorrow, Saturday and Sunday. So take a chance to like watch it, it's really good. I've seen like little glimpses of it because some of my friends are in theater, definitely worth it. The MHS Early College Program is hosting a lot of college visits. I think they've gone to Wheaton, they've gone to Framingham State, QuinSig, and a couple of other colleges too. And they're also hosting an event to get direct admission into Framingham State. I think it's during one of our flex blocks, and you go, you meet some alumni, things like that, and you can get admission on the spot for anyone who wants to attend Framingham State. Seniors, we've been ordering our caps and gowns, yearbook is underway, we've been taking pictures almost every day, way too many pictures, but it's okay. And our physics teacher, he's actually my physics teacher, Mr. Neil Sherman, he received the Promising Practices in Education Award from the Blackstone Valley Superintendent and Curriculum Consortium for his approach on grading, personalized feedback, which I thought was pretty cool because he's my teacher and I think it's a pretty amazing award and he definitely deserved it. The Student Leadership and Care Club are having a Canon Food Drive, so it's across Milford High School. We're kind of doing it like a competition between each grade, so whichever grade gets the most like Canon bottles, not bottles, Canon food, we'll like count them up as a student council every week, and that grade will get $500 for their student leadership to use. So you can use it for like prom, like after prom, like getting a hypnotist, getting a photo booth at prom, things like that. And the last thing I have is the Milford Music Department. We had a lot of people audition for central districts, so I don't know how familiar everyone is with that, it's a little weird. But we have, there's a bunch of districts obviously in Massachusetts, and for music, each like music department I guess will send a couple of kids to audition each year. You get the music in like June and you practice all the way up till November, and you go for the audition. And you compete against basically all the schools in Central Mass. And we had about six students get in from the entire music department, which is pretty impressive. Yeah, that's my update.
Excellent. Any questions, comments? Megan?
I'd love to hear if you're willing to share, we have senior year besides all the pictures going for you. I know it's early in the process, but just curious kind of how it's going.
It's going good, definitely very stressful. The only form of good news I have right now is I was announced valedictorian.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. And that's all, that's all I have.
We have a good track record of having student representatives who are number one or number two in their class, so that's excellent, congratulations.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to get backup support, feel free to connect with another student representative, maybe a junior who would continue next year, might be neat to have that partnership start.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you for the updates, great to see you. I stepped away for one minute, so I'm not sure if you said anything. How school spirit in and around, that's something that usually, you know, we don't necessarily hear unless it's from you, so just kind of a quick update on that.
So school spirit, I think pep rally and homecoming is probably the best way to like address this. Pep rally went great, Spirit Week went great, we had a lot of participation. And this year, at least for student leadership, I know we kind of switched up the Spirit Weeks, we made them a little bit different. We kind of did two days in one, that was good, we had a lot of participation. Homecoming, we had the most kids we've ever had. And otherwise, I think, I think everything school spirit wise is good. Sports, I'm seeing lots of Milford merch, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Just real quick, how are the facilities? I know last year we had a lot of discussions about that, any updates there?
Okay, so I know I brought this up to Mr. Ottlin, the girls bathroom in Lower A had like no lock. He fixed that, like the facilities director got right on that, so that's all set. And yeah, I think now we have one in Upper A that needs fixing, but I'm gonna bring that up to Mr. Ottlin at one of our meetings. And yeah, otherwise, everything is looking good.
Thank you.
Thanks, PD.
I love that you guys are following that flow of internal process, right? Of going to your internal representatives, your assistant principals, principals, and I like that there's a quick response, that's great to hear. Anything else, PD? All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
That's a great update, thank you.
See you guys soon.
See ya. All right, that, hold on, there we go. That brings us to announcements, correspondence, and distribution, I know you have one.
Yeah, one quick announcement, just my role on planning board, that Phase Three of Stone Ridge, which is up just beyond Restaurant Depot, that was proposed to planning board. Phase Two is just starting to move into the building phase of it, so obviously what you see is Phase One, there is Phase Two, which is again 40B, Phase Three is being proposed. There's also 21 Beaver Street, which is another 40B that's being proposed, and then 310 Fortune Boulevard, so.
That's it?
Yeah, exactly. And just quickly, I asked Jim today, you know, busing wise, how many, how many students are these busing from the Phase One, and it was about 27 students, so it kind of gives you, and that's a smaller unit based on what's being proposed. So just making everybody aware of that as we look at our enrollment projections over the next few years.
Any others?
Just real quick, and then we can, today is the 15th Annual Scarlet Hawk Turkey Trot and Fun Run, I'll be there, hopefully others in the community will be too.
Nothing else? All right, thank you very much for those updates. Invitation to speak is next, do we have?
We don't, no. Just observing.
All right, good. I mean, good, I guess if she wants to talk.
Welcome. Thanks.
Yes, for coming. The next two items on the list, chairperson update, quickly, we're gonna talk about the HR personnel stuff that we discussed last meeting. Len's been working very hard on that, gathering a lot of data, but it is not ready, so we're gonna pass on that until she's comfortable with what she has. And then it sounds like Dr. Bolinari could not make it tonight due to some, some family matters that he has to take care of, so we'll pass on.
I can actually give a real quick update, they were very happy with the class sizes as well, so I don't think we're gonna have to bring them back until the spring.
Okay.
As required by the contract, so.
Discounts?
It does.
Fantastic. Thank you. That brings us to the Technology Grants and Communication Department update. Welcome. Hi, everyone.
Evening. Just getting squared away here. I should have warmed it up ahead of time.
I can give you some class size numbers if you want to, because this is coming up. So class sizes across the district are very good. At the K2 level, the average class sizes range from 17 to 19. For Grade Three, it's 22, Grade Four, 23, and Grade Five is 20. Class sizes at the middle school are typically in the mid twenties with some variation by content area. In the high school, class sizes are also very reasonable. It's hard to give good averages there because they're not by grade level, and the content area varies a little bit, but there's, there's some sections that are over 25, and some of that is by design.
Awesome.
All right, so that's a really quick, quick and dirty update on that, looks like we're good to go.
Perfect.
I've got other filler as we go on through.
I scrolled through Open Architects, everything looked pretty good today. All right.
All right, I'm good to go. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm excited to share some updates from, from my multiple departments as Director of Technology, Grants, and Communication. So I shared with you a slideshow and, you know, fill in some details as we're going along, but feel free to jump in with any questions. First, I want to acknowledge our technology team, as I start with technology. First, Nancy Angelini, not only for technology and all of the roles that I'm currently filling, did a phenomenal job of leaving things in wonderful shape. Nancy, I'm sure you know from her updates with you, is detailed and organized and is just an absolute bolt, would do a lot, did a lot of work and left very big shoes to fill. So I want to acknowledge Nancy and how she passed things off to me. I also want to acknowledge our tech team. It's been a huge pleasure to work with, with all of these folks. And as you know, my background is from the education side of things, and jumping into the technology role, I've really needed to lean on these folks, and they've been just amazing in helping me to learn the role and get up to speed on a lot of things, and there's been a lot of things where I feel like, you know, they could be very condescending if they wanted to be, and they weren't. They recognize that they're, they're teaching me as, as we're going along, and they've been a phenomenal team, and they're, they're just, it's a well-oiled machine. So I want to acknowledge Kevin, Jonathan, Edgar, Dave, Dan, Sarah, Ryan, and Lisa, who have been a great asset to, to everything that we're doing. So jumping into our technology updates, you know, just to kind of give you a rundown of what we've been working on since July up to this point. Chromebook distribution was, was phenomenal this year, we distributed over 2,000 Chromebooks, which is a little bit more than normal. This was one of our cycle years where we distributed new Chromebooks to grades K1, 2, 3, 6, and 9. Typically, we're, we're distributing Chromebooks to 3, 6, grades 3, 6, and 9, and then the K to 2 every four years. And so this was one of those fourth years, so we had an extra about 1,000 Chromebooks that we needed to prepare and get ready and distribute. Great work from the high school tech team, student tech team over the summer, under the direction of Dan Nelson, helping us to prepare those and get those distributed. About 30 new staff members with all of their onboarding, from all of their accounts and getting everything set up for them, to their laptops, those were all prepared and distributed right on, right on time. A fairly big project over the summer was the installation of a new firewall, which was very smooth. You know, that's our first line of defense for our cybersecurity, and as you know, like the, the world is a scary place in terms of cybersecurity right now. And that went off without a hitch. We were able to transition to a new firewall system. It's very smooth, it's very reliable. Kevin Cullen, who's our network manager, raves about this, he just feels like it's been a great addition and very easy to use, and helping to also, we do a lot of cross training as well, so getting our technicians up to speed on, on this forward and that system has been really pretty smooth as well. We also switched our filtering and classroom management software from GoGuardian to Lightspeed, which saved us about 15,000 dollars for a product that was very similar and we feel in many ways has been an upgrade. That Lightspeed filtering software and the new firewall, both of those gave us kind of an opportunity to kind of reset all of our permissions on all of the websites and all of the traffic that's coming into the classrooms and getting to our teachers and students. Now, I'd be lying if I didn't say there wasn't a little bit of grumbling with this, but one of the things that I really like about this is it's forced us to analyze and reflect on all of the things that we're using from year to year. There's things that, you know, maybe were, you know, allowed, are allowed to pass a few years ago, and that we've just been recycling year after year, and this new system has forced us to be like, is this the best resource that we could use? Is this the most appropriate resource that we could use? So that's been really encouraging, is to kind of take another look at what's getting through our filters and getting to our kids, getting to our teachers as well, and having teachers kind of say like, yeah, this is important to me and I want to use this for my classroom instruction, kind of having to make a case a little bit. And so that's been, I think, the, the good thing about this filtering system, is it's really given us a chance to take another look at all of the technology that's, that's getting through the internet to our kids and to our teachers, so that's been a great thing. We've implemented a new secure password system. You know, no one likes to change their password, but we forced everyone to change their password this year, so no more password as your password, or 1234 is your password, Dr. McIntyre, I'm looking at you.
I still put that in every time too, it just shocks me.
Yeah, we put, we put a new complex password requirement in on all of our network systems, so that's, that's step one, or one of the steps that we're taking to improve our network security. We've installed about 70 new touchscreen interactive monitors, just like this one, across the district, replacing projectors, which are currently kind of reaching the end of life. They're very expensive to replace, they're not easy to find, the replacement parts, they're kind of going the, the way of the dinosaur in a lot of places, especially in smaller presentation spaces. This is really the preferred technology. So we installed about 70 of these this year across the district, and, and that's gonna be in the budget, that's coming up soon, that's gonna be in there for next year as well, continuing to replace the projector systems with, with these, which are more cost effective in the long term, easier to replace. We've installed cameras in multiple locations across the district, either new cameras or upgrading cameras at Brookside School, the MHS Turf, and in all of the kitchens this year. So just to increase our security across, across the district and upgrade some of the cameras, which were a little bit grainy and pixelated, getting to some high-def cameras and high-def software. That's been helpful. As you know, we've updated and refreshed our website, kind of given that a cleansing. We've, we've trimmed a lot of outdated and obsolete material, tried to keep it updated, and, you know, given it a little bit of a cleaner look, easier to navigate. We've had some really good feedback on, on the website. The tricky part now is staying current and staying with it, and we're continuing to build our content across, across each building, particularly at the high school. Josh has been really great about giving some nudges and giving some time to staff in different departments to increase their content to, to put onto our website. This year, we made a push to get a student use agreement publicized and our charge and fee procedures publicized. We want to make sure that families know that their student is responsible for their Chromebook and responsible for how they use their Chromebook. We want to make sure that families are aware of that information. So if something were to happen, they have the option to purchase a protection plan, or they at least are aware of if something goes wrong, you are responsible for paying for, you know, potential damages. We just want to make sure the communication is there so that if a student were to lose a Chromebook or break a Chromebook, if we're saying we owe us $200 to replace that Chromebook, the family's not saying, I didn't know anything about this. So we want to make sure that we're being very upfront and transparent with our, our device usage and what students and families are responsible for. We have re-inventoried all of our Chromebooks. We did notice that there was an error in some of our Chromebook labeling, so we went about an inventory correction plan, and we've correctly now inventoried all of our Chromebooks across the district to make sure that the, the asset tag matches the serial number, matches the student who it's been assigned to. So we feel very confident that our, all of our devices, we know who has them, what the device is, what the asset tag is, the current serial number. We feel very confident that all of our inventory is correctly labeled and tracked. AV updates, we've done a number of AV updates for Brookside and the high school in terms of some of their equipment that was either needed to be repaired or replaced to get those things up and running. We, I have to be honest with you, the MHS systems are a little bit harder because a lot of the equipment, when we are saying this needs to be repaired or replaced, is either out of warranty or they no longer make these parts, and I'm sure that's not a surprise to some of you, but it's been a challenge with a couple of things, so we're having to, to patch things up here and there with, with some of the AV stuff at the high school. And we've improved and installed a number of Wi-Fi access points where we found some, either some dead spots, or we found like we needed to have more coverage area or, or access. An example I can give is using the MHS Dance Room, which is above the gym, for large testing spaces, for when they're doing MCAS or AP testing or things like that, where they have to test 75, 100 kids in one space. The access points, Wi-Fi access points that were in there were not sufficient, so we needed to boost the signals in some of those areas, so outfitting a couple of spaces around the district with that. In terms of day-to-day kind of operations, since the first day of school until last Friday, 2,818 tickets were submitted. Average response time was 5.2 hours and resolution was a little over a day. Those numbers are a little skewed because they also do include weekends when my guys aren't responding to tickets over weekends, so I think it's a pretty impressive number, and we feel like we're really on top of our ticket situation, and, and those tickets run anywhere from, you know, the laptop's not working, it's broken, to I can't access this website, to, you know, the projector's not working the right way. So it could run a full gamut, and I feel like our technicians and our tech team is, is really on top of a lot of the, the issues that come our way in terms of troubleshooting. As part of that ticket system, we did implement the ticket system at Stacy this year. The ticket system has been in place across the district everywhere but Stacy up until this year. We felt like this needed to happen at Stacy, it has happened after a little bit of adjustment time and getting used to how this is gonna work. Stacy's now onboard, and one of the great parts about having Stacy onboard is it's increased our opportunities for our student tech team to have more devices that they can work with, again, under the direction of Dan Nelson. We have students that go to buildings, pick up Chromebooks, student Chromebooks that are having issues, they bring them back to the high school, they fix them, they return them. We've been, one of our, our professional learning pushes this year is around AI and artificial intelligence in education. We've done two AI professional learning sessions at the high school with high school staff after school, and we've done one with Woodland, just introducing staff to some of the AI tools that are available to them. This is more of a kind of a introduce and explore at a professional level. We're not talking about AI usage with students at this time, although we know we need to. Our real push right off the bat is to get teachers to understand what AI in education means for them and how these tools might benefit their professional workflow. And then from there, we'll be able to have some other discussions around its implications in terms of instruction, learning, and how students might be interacting with AI. So that's coming in the next phase. We've had a great collaboration this fall so far with our Milford Police Department and our SROs, helping to get their computers and networked from the high school to Milford PD, so that way the exchange of information between the two sites is seamless. Our SROs have access to their, all of their network folders and drives and stuff like that, the PD, while they're here, which has been really helpful. We've been able to provide them with camera feeds from all of our schools directly to the high school, directly to the Milford Police Department, which is something that Chief Tosino was looking for as they kind of developed their, their dispatch center and their call center. Being able to see, you know, the, the school camera feeds has been really important to him. Being able to see, you know, the, the school camera feeds has been really important to him as part of increasing our, our security levels. And also the rave panic button app is something that we worked on this fall to coordinate with the, the Milford PD in terms of making sure we have another tool for our staff to be able to use in crisis situations. And, and the PD and the Milford Town IT Department were fantastic to work with for all of those things. And last but not least, as a, as an update, the Milford Gridiron Club purchased a Huddle camera which has been installed at the press box. It's that kind of robot looking thing on the front of the press box. We helped to install that with the assistance of our facilities team, a contractor that we worked with and the Milford Parks Department who had to do a little trimming of trees. So that way we have a camera that records game footage or practice footage, but mostly it's used for games. Goes right to the Huddle website. This is what a lot of our coaches use to break down game film, to study opponents, study, do a little self-study. Kids also use this to create highlight packages to send to college recruiters and things like that. So the football team has used it, the youth football program has also used it, but I know that there's intention for the soccer teams potentially use this for the lacrosse teams, any of the teams that are playing at the high school turf. So it's just another technology tool that we were able to add to the, to the athletic program that we're excited to help with. So those are all the things that we've done so far in the tech department. That's a lot. I'll stop for any questions or I can go on to future plans in, in the next couple of months.
Anybody want to have questions or comments on this piece?
Quick question.
Sure, Mike.
Thanks for the update. The Huddle focus camera, what value is that? Like, how expensive is it?
I actually have no idea.
It was like fifteen thousand. Yeah, so i- it's a large value. That probably should come to the school committee so we can vote to accept it as a gift.
Okay, yeah, that was, yeah, the Milford Gridiron.
I guess it was like ten plus grand, so.
I have no idea. It was, it was said, we have this camera, can you help us install it?
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, so I will, I will pass the word along to the Gridiron Club.
Sure.
Comments? Anyone else?
Quickly, you were saying the police department is able to monitor cameras throughout, also at the turf field too?
Yep.
They monitoring that?
Yep.
And do we have cameras at the Woodland turf field?
We do, yes. The Woodland cameras, there's, we don't have like.
I wouldn't talk too much about coverage in a public meeting. I'm just going to say like I wouldn't maybe have that conversation.
Yes, we do.
We do, we do. Simple as that. Okay, great.
Won't talk too much about this at a public meeting either, but the rave app, is that something that's optional for use or what is?
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah, yeah, teachers, all, all staff members have the option to install it on their, on their phones. It just gives, it gives staff members the ability to report a crisis emergency situation.
And that goes straight to the Milford Police Department?
And, and to school administration, yeah.
It's connected right into the nine one one system.
Michael?
How often do we do like drills with the rave app? Rave app? Is it like informal, formal?
We haven't, and that's one of the things that we did this fall was to, and, and we discovered some challenges with using it. So that's something we did this fall was to start to do some of those testing because it hadn't been done in a while. We, I identified some challenges that we need to update. And, and so we're now, we don't have a plan yet, but our, my colleague over at the Town IT Department, Chris George, and I have talked about, we need to do these on a, you know, quarterly basis to do some kind of testing, just to make sure. Just like we do, you know, a, a fire drill, bus evacuation drill, things like that. We need to do the same for this app.
I think it's great to have.
All right, carry on.
Okay, so upcoming, some plans as we're moving forward. Whether it's, these are things that I'm looking to do in the second half of the year as, or into going into next year. Continuing our, our, our education on artificial intelligence and education and how it's being used. We hope to, to visit other schools and, and meet with other teachers. We are starting to work on a draft policy to, to bring back to the school committee to evaluate and, and to assess and, and obviously get your input. But we're, right now we're drafting some things, looking at some of the other school districts that have an AI policy in place, which by the way, there are very few that currently do. So we are not behind in that at all. Most school districts don't. But the ones that do, we're starting to look at those, talk to our teachers, talk about best practices, talking with our legal representation as well. So that way we can present something to you guys for your consideration moving forward. Looking at a short-term and long-term technology plan, multiple-year technology plan, putting something formal in place to present to you guys for your consideration and your own planning. One of the things that we're working on currently as we're developing our budget is cleaning up in all of our subscriptions across the district and making sure we have tighter controls and, and a better accounting of which subscriptions are being used where and whether they meet certain regulatory and compliance requirements. So we're looking at the subscriptions and, and trying to, to make sure we have a good handle on who's using what, who's paying for what. Is there efficiencies that can be found if we're buying in bulk, things like that. We're always looking at our, our student information system, currently Aspen X two. You know, it's, it's a tough thing because, you know, I don't, I don't think there's a single district that I've talked to that's happy with their student information system, but there's very few systems that are out there. And switching a student information system is a massive, massive, massive undertaking. So with that in mind, making sure that Aspen is always meeting our needs. So it's something that we've met on already this fall to talk about like, is this something that we want to investigate or not? Are they meeting our needs? How can we continue to work with Aspen in productive and positive ways to, to get the, the data? And, you know, all of the forums and systems in place that we need to. Our phone system is rapidly getting out of date, so that's something that we're looking at both this year and in future years at updating our phone systems. We're looking at, you know, continuing to look at the back-of-the-house technology, things like switches and access points and, you know, deployment software, things like that, things that, that our teaching staff, our, you know, our support staff, things that they don't see, hopefully is, hopefully they don't see, they don't notice. We want all of those working, so we're continuing to try and make sure that we have everything that we need to meet the day-to-day operations. The switches and access points is something that you're going to see very soon, hopefully in the budget process. So I'm just putting it out there that it's a big ask and I'm coming to talk to you about that.
One thing we like about Tim is he's consistent with his budget asks.
So that'll be a coming up. We're talking, we're, we're working with Wen to support the HR process, trying to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible, especially with a lot of the onboarding and making sure that we have all of our systems, whether it's from our, our attendance and frontline, you know, collaborating with our payroll to some of the hiring process and hiring paperwork and all of those things that need to happen. So looking at the HR process and seeing what we can do from a technology department to support that department. And then last but not least, in, in the future, we've talked, had some conversations about having all of our folks that have VPN access and remote access being on multi-factor authentication systems. But rolling that out maybe in a, in a large scale in terms of things like email, that might be coming down the line as, as cyber security becomes more and more of a pressing and important issue. So we know that multi-factor authentication is going to be a, a big change for folks. So trying to figure out how we do that in a way that's, you know, minimizes disruption and something that folks can get on board with. You know, it's something that they do and they're personalized, but asking them to do it as part of their work, work life might be a little bit of a change. So that's something that we're in early discussions with.
We'll pause there. Anything on that? Go ahead, thank you.
I have a quick question, Tim, and then a comment. You shared a couple of potential upcoming budget requests. I was curious if the resources from a staffing standpoint seem sufficient?
This is the one place I'm breaking with my norm, Kev.
Okay.
I won't be asking for more people.
Okay. So the amount that you have is managing those tickets and sort of the day-to-day?
Yeah, we feel like we're, we're on top of things. And like I said, one of the things that we've been, and, and this didn't start with me, so I, I take no credit for this. One of the things that, that the technology department has done is a lot of cross-training. So that way, if, for example, Kevin Cullen is absent for a day or two, he's sick, whatever, we have other people on staff who can step in and do some of what he's doing so things don't come to a standstill. So that's something that's, I think, is a really a, a strength of our department is that we have people who are trying to do, learn from each other. We do a lot of documentation as well, like if there's a fix that has to happen, people are recording that, like what they did and how they fixed things. So that way someone else can follow, you know, follow that path if they have to do something similar. So I think that's been really helpful in not needing more people because I think, you know, we have people who are helping each other out.
That's great. Just if it was coming, I would like to hear maybe a firsthand. It feels like, I know you're not even done with your update. It feels like maybe you've been in this role for a little longer than six months, so kudos to you for all that's been accomplished. I was just going to point out, I know at the high school, we did incorporate AI into the handbook last year. So just ensure that we're either aligning or replacing that as you roll out the policy.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, we've, we've had some early discussions and I've shared our, you know, kind of a draft with the leadership team. The next step is going to be to look at the teachers and, you know, one of the things that we, we're trying to walk a fine line is what, what is policy versus what is, you know, procedures and guidelines that fall in handbooks?
Important difference.
And trying to keep those separate so that way we have some flexibility around, you know, changes. Because AI is, you know, as I say all the time in any presentation, by the time I finish this AI presentation, it's going to be obsolete. It's, we're going to be on to something else. It's, it's changing that rapidly. So we want to be able, we want to have the ability to adapt and change our guidelines around AI usage to meet the, the current, you know, field or the current demand.
Absolutely. I think, kudos to you though, just on the PD for staff because I think it's just so critical that people be informed in terms of even what's available and out there.
It's, it's pretty awesome. I think it's, it's, it's early. We haven't met with a lot of people, but you know, just meeting with even the leadership team when we show people some of the tools that are freely available, it's like, whoa, blows your mind.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just in terms of the student information system, and I think this actually probably aligns more with the communication part of your role. Has there ever been any thought to giving parental access to elementary school level parents to Aspen? I know that at Stacy and the high school there is, and I'm even thinking things like monitoring your own child's attendance, things like that might be beneficial. I don't know if it's something the district's ever considered.
So we did actually have, we did have access for fifth grade when Woodland went from, to, from three to four to five. Fifth grade, so fifth grade had access. And it's actually something that I said, I proposed that we take away. So it's funny that you bring that up because it was mostly, it was mostly being used for grades, honestly. And where elementary is not, doesn't have kind of the grading system that the middle school and high school has. We felt like it wasn't necessary. It was just one more thing, but I'm sure, yeah, happy to revisit that.
It was more around the attendance because I know that's become such a focus and sometimes I wonder if parents are not, unless they get a letter or some type of communication, if they're not even aware that their children are missing more days. So that, that's where my thought came from, but it's not necessary, it's just a curiosity.
Yeah.
Thanks for presenting tonight. A question just in regards to staff training and like just cybersecurity. Do you ever implement any of that phishing scams and what to look out for?
Nothing formal, but it has been something that I've, I've addressed with staff a couple of times already this, this year in sending out some kind of tips and, and things to look for in some of these phishing scams. We actually got hit with one, what's today, Thursday? Tuesday night, one went out and hit a lot of people. And it was, you know, and one of the things that I'm encouraged by is I, I get a lot of emails, every day I get one or two emails from staff like, hey, is this legit? Like, take a look at this email I received. Can you tell me if this is a, a phishing scam or if this is legit? So I know the message is getting out there, that they've got to be, that staff have got to be aware of this and vigilant because they're reporting these things. And Tuesday night I got probably a dozen emails from people being like, hey, just want to let you know that this phishing scam is going out. So I think people are, like, are now being a little bit more accountable and aware. And with each of those examples, I try and send out like, hey, you know, this is, you know, here's the, here's the phishing scam. Here's how you would know it's a phishing scam, you know, whether it's misspelled names or signs from the HR department. Like, we don't have an HR department, so you're not going to get an email from the HR department. So things like that, like.
Certainly more creative.
Yeah, so we're trying to, we're trying to educate our staff because that's, they're the first line of defense.
Yeah, definitely.
And just reminding people, you know, don't give out your email, don't give out your password, you know, things like that, like little things.
Okay. And this may be more on the communication side, you know, like the new website and, you know, I don't, I don't go on it as often as I did in the past, but certainly have been on a little bit here and there. A school-wide, like a district or district app for your, you know, for your, your phone, is that something that we're considering? Or is that more something you're going to talk about in the communication side of the world?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. So it's something that we've looked at. I've met with people from Parent Square, which is a very well-known, popular, kind of all-in-one communication tool that several districts in this area have, are starting to use. You know, and I, I feel like there's a few, few people who have, you know, whether it's friends, neighbors, cousins, whatever, in other towns that are like, hey, here's this great app. So it's certainly something that we've looked at. So Parent Square is, is one of those all-in-one. It does, you know, text messaging, email, school newsletters, attendance updates. It, it's kind of all-in-one. You know, it's, I, I feel like cost-wise, it's, it's, it's reasonable. I feel like from inefficiency in communication, it's got some nice, nice features to it. The question is how many changes can we implement all at once?
Right, yeah.
So just trying to kind of slow the, the pace of like, hey, here's a new thing, here's a new thing, here's a new thing. So we're kind of.
So not necessarily in the upcoming budget cycle, by the future budget cycle, we may.
It's something we're aware of and something that we're investigating. If we can find something that's an all-in-one tool that, you know, teachers, administrators, parents can all funnel through, I think it's certainly something we're looking at.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to jump to grants, is that all right?
I'm going to step on you for a second, go back one.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask for one thing come budget time.
Shoot.
Anything phone related or switches or APs, can you include a list of end-of-life dates for those things? And the reason I'm asking for that for anyone who's not following is obviously we're talking about a new building. And a lot of this stuff isn't going to forklift over to a new building. If a device is marked as end-of-life, that's when your security risk comes in. They don't support it in terms of like the Cisco world. They don't put out updates and security updates. So you're really on your own at that point. That's, you want to replace those things before you get to that point. And I think that'll help if you come with, I know how expensive those things can be, if you come with a big list of switches and AP replacements that still have two or three years left, it may make our decision easier to say, we can give you this much and this may have to stagger or whatnot.
Well, one of the things I didn't mention was there's a phone ask on this year's budget as well, Matt, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Awesome.
For that exact reason is that we're, we're, our phone system is end-of-life summer of 2025. So I think we're on Cisco twelve or thirteen and they're at fifteen.
That sounds right.
So we need to do something this summer. So that's coming.
Awesome, great.
Thank you.
Maybe your grants role could feed into.
So I will, yes, I will.
We may be replacing the new phones before we get to the new.
Yeah, I won't get into that, but yeah.
Okay.
Good luck.
All right, the grants, the grants world, switching hats here. This has by far been my biggest learning curve. Learning the grants and education management system has been a lot to learn. Learning how the grants, the roles and responsibilities work, who's doing what, who's responsible for what grant. One of the things that I wasn't aware of, that I am aware of is how many other administrators and educators are heavily involved in this, in the grant writing process, in the submission, whether it's from Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV grants to some of the Perkins things that, that are being done at the high school. There's a lot of, a lot of educators who are part of the grant process. And my role is, is more to kind of oversee that and steer it and make sure that things are getting kind of submitted on time, making sure it's going through that JEM system efficiently. So that's been part of my role. Also supported a number of staff with other grant submissions, for example, to the Milford Cultural Council, looking for grants. I wouldn't say necessarily private grants, but private-public grants, helping other staff members to submit things for, for, for that. You know, we've had a number of grants, both competitive and entitlement that have been awarded. I just gave you kind of a sampling. But so far for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we're at about three million, three hundred thousand. Uh, but so far for the 24-25 school year, we're, uh, at about $3 million, uh, $300,000 of grants that have been secured for, for the Milford Public Schools. Um, again, I, I do not take all the credit for that, there's a lot of administrators and educators that, uh, wrote grants, um, submitted them. Uh, so, so a lot of people have a hand in, in that, you know, 3 million plus, uh, that have been secured for, for, for our schools. Um, we've also got a number of grants that are submitted that have not been officially approved yet, uh, totaling about another $150,000. Um, and again, a lot of these grants are, um, both competitive and entitlement. They run the gamut for things that might support, you know, kids across the district or a specific school. But I, you know, I want, I'm not gonna read them all for you, but, um, there's a lot of, a lot of things in motion in, in the grant world. Um, upcoming, you know, continuing to monitor and research the DESI grants. Um, you know, DESI's tricky in that they will announce a grant, but then they won't post it for days on end, and you just kind of have to look for it and find it. Or they'll post it and they won't tell you about it, and all of a sudden you just discover it. Um, we're also finding there's a lot of grants where they award the grant pending funding. And then you're just sitting and waiting for that funding, it's like, days go by, weeks go by, months go by, and we're running out of time to spend it. And all of a sudden it's January and we were planning on this grant to start in September, but we've gotta spend all the money, and now six months instead of 10 months, and it's tricky that way. Um, so continue to stay on top of, of those grants and, and looking for, you know, community organizations, private grant opportunities, things like that. Um, so that's the grant world.
Two quick questions.
Yeah, Meg.
Um, first again, Tim, right, we're headed into budget season, this to me seems like a potential area where I'm always curious if we would increase staff. Would that potentially create more bandwidth to then bring in more money, is that something that you think about? Or not necessary, I don't know, it's just.
I, I'm not, I don't see a, a direct correlation between those two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any talk or information in terms of as we think about a change in, uh, federal, um, direction for education in terms of potential impact that we should be thinking about as we go into our next budget cycle? We've always had this grant, we're not sure that this is gonna be removed.
Yeah, you can probably take that one.
Okay.
It's probably too early to tell right now, um, there's a lot of like talk out there, but it's, it's impossible to say. Every district in the United States of America is impacted by the, the federal government and those title grants that Tim just mentioned. Um, I, I think until we hear something that's a little more definitive, everything's speculation.
Okay. I think it might be helpful for us, Kevin, to just start to think about or just have more awareness around what sort of like core programming is funded via grants? Just so we're, um, aware, I guess, just creating the awareness. I know there's nothing we can necessarily do at this point, but just, um, food the thought, thanks.
In terms of numbers, I, I would think the bigger implication, not necessarily staffing, is student enrollment. I think that will have more of an impact on
Yeah.
you know, the funding that we're allotted or not.
The per student amount, Tim, if you're.
Yeah, yeah, I think the student, student enrollment will have a, a bigger.
Yep, correlation.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So seeing the amount we've been awarded this year is wonderful. Are we part of any grants that are multi-year, so do we have funds from previous years that we're still using and spending?
Yeah, a lot of, um, especially a lot of the, the title grants are, you know, they roll over year to year.
Okay.
Um, so if things don't necessarily get spent in, in one year, they, they continue on, or you have a, a, you know, a, a longer window
Mm-hmm.
to, to, to expend those funds.
Okay.
Um, you know, some of the other grants that, you know, the Student Opportunity Act, um, which is, what year is this now, Kevin?
It's five.
Four or five, yeah. Um, we're reaching the end of that one, but that's kind of, that's been a multi-year grant, so.
So the 3 million we see here is just new grants we've gotten, that's, we're still spending money from other things.
Correct, yes, that's just this year.
Sounds good.
Okay. Communication, um, an update on where we're at with communications. So this summer we issued a survey, um, not bad for a summer survey, we got about, you know, 700 or so respondents. Um, I looked at the summary for you guys, uh, of, of, of the feedback that, that families gave us. Um, we've got, uh, a website, as I mentioned, the website refreshed, clean, new look, consistency between schools. Um, tried to update, uh, the content so that it's current, and trimmed back a few things so that, you know, you, you didn't have to go through seven clicks to, to kind of find something. So kind of trimming some of those branches. Um, trying to keep our online school calendars populated and current. Um, you know, that's hard to do, it's, it's one of those things that kind of often falls between the cracks. Um, so it's trying to remind, you know, the folks that are responsible to stay on top of those things. Um, our social media, we did a relaunch, um, a new Facebook page, new Instagram page, we're building followers. Um, but, you know, and, and we saw this in the, in the, in the survey feedback as well. Social media doesn't have the same draw that it did, you know, maybe five, 10 years ago. Um, it's slowing down a little bit. Uh, it's really, I mean, we're using it more of a PR tool than a communication tool, kind of publicizing some of the great things that are going on. Every now and then pushing out something that's more PR, I'm sorry, um, communication-related, you know, updates on, for example, uh, you know, a community service project or a, you know, a clothing drive or things like that. But more often than not, it's, it's really trying to showcase some of the really awesome things that are happening and getting a cross-section. It's not just athletics, it's athletics, it's the classroom, it's, you know, a service club, it's, it's the music program. Trying to get a little bit of everything out there.
Um, we'll, we'll see an uptick too with the winter season coming along, so you, you, the Instagram followers will probably go up, especially when I send out.
Yeah.
Putting out snow delays and cancellations on Instagram.
Um, one of the, one of the things that we did transition to as part of the communication is having a digital backpack that's posted on the website, that gets updated every week. Just a, as a kind of a one-stop shop for all of the postings of, you know, whether it's baseball signups or craft fair, um, or a, you know, community drive or some kind of support organization. Just having a, a kind of a one place where people can go and revisit, so you, you don't have to keep track of, oh, I saw that in some email somewhere. It's there every week. You, you know, you, where to find it, you don't have to go searching through your emails, you don't have to go searching through your kid's backpack for paper copies of things, although those still go out. Um, and schools are still sending out emails, we still do that, but we're trying to keep, you know, all of the community, you know, kind of advertising of whether it's the Monster Mash or, um, you know, some kind of, uh, other organization that's, that's promoting a project that they're doing. Trying to keep it all in one place so that everyone has a place to go back to look. Um, sending out a weekly bulletin, I've replaced my weekly email with a weekly bulletin. Um, my siblings who were excited to move on to Stacy, like, we're done with your weekly bulletins finally. No, you're not. I get them every week, uh, so I'm sending, uh, once a week I send out, you know, a kind of an update with not only the digital backpack, but, you know, just some positive, good news about what's going on in the district, some shout-outs to teachers. Um, you know, as much as, as the social media is a PR campaign, so is our weekly bulletin, just to kind of share some of the good things that are happening in the district. Um, bite-sized, it's not some of my long misses that Woodland families used to get. Um, emphasizing talking points is our one tool, uh, for communication. One, one point of feedback that we heard from families is that, you know, I've got one kid whose teacher is using Remind, one kid who's using Dojo, one kid who's using Talking Points. So like, I can't keep track of it all. So really emphasizing talking points is our one tool for text messaging, um, families, so that way families know where to look. And they know how to communicate with, with, with our staff. Um, we're also, we expanded our talking points use to include a district account, so that way things like, hey, a reminder, there's no school tomorrow, or it's an early release. Instead of getting five text messages, one from each building, you're getting one from central office. So, kind of streamlining the communication there. Uh, this year we're piloting a tool called Pocket Talk. It's kind of like a, almost like a, if you're from old school and you can remember those, you know, the, um, iPods. Like, it's about yay big, and it's really just a translation tool. Um, we're piloting that in, at our front desks in our nurse's office. Um, and it's really just used for translation and interpretation. So when our translators and interpreters are not available for, you know, those impromptu kind of conversations, a parent just shows up in the office, or, you know, they have to pick up a sick kid, and we might not have a, um, Spanish speaker or, you know, a Haitian Creole speaker available. We've got a, we've got a translation and interpretation tool that our staff members can use. It's been, it's received some really great feedback. Um, it's not something that we're promoting for formal situations, like, for example, a 504 meeting or an IEP meeting or a parent-teacher conference, but you know, a parent walks up to you at the car loop and has got a question, you can have those quick, easy interactions, um, with this translation tool. Um, so that's gotten some really good feedback, so we, we may be looking at purchasing some more. Um, they're, they're cost-effective, um, and really, really helpful. Um, I mentioned the district-wide Talking Points, uh, account. Um, uh, let's see, uh, centralizing our communication hub for, you know, all the different organizations that wanna advertise events and things like that. Having it all kind of come through me again, so rather than getting an email from three different building principals that there's baseball signups, it's all coming through one source. So you get one, one email instead of three. Um, and then one of the things that we're trying to do as well is kind of have some standardized published procedures for outside organizations. If they wanna send out a flyer through the Milford Public Schools, it's gotta meet certain criteria, it's gotta be translated in three languages. All three languages need to be represented equally. Um, you know, things like that, uh, so we, we're sharing that out with any organization that wants to, you know, publicize anything with us. Um, or even internal organizations, you know, whether it's music or a department or whatever it is, so I, I have that link for you guys as well. Upcoming, you know, continuing to build best practices in a culture of communication. Um, uh, we mentioned the one-stop shopping Parent Square, um, as, as something that I've met with the Parent Square people just to get some basic information and and get some pricing from them, and something that we'll look at in future years. Um, continuing to develop our website and our content, uh, exploring more translation and interpretation tools and supports. Uh, developing our phone trees and interpretation services for phone messages. Um, that's always kind of a challenge, uh, that we've talked about is, is, you know, a lot of families that call our phones and having them navigate the phone tree can be difficult. Um, so how can we do that in a way that is culturally responsive and sensitive to, to all of our families? And then, uh, continuing to look for ways that we can partner with MHS classes on content, whether it's through digital media or communications. Um, there's some really great course offerings here at the high school for, for our students around communication, around digital media. Um, seeing how that might fit into the technology and communication world, um, as well, so. That's all I got. Communication questions.
Just quickly, Tim, I love, the website looks great, I love the digital backpack concept, so many great changes. My only ask, and it may just be in the couple that I've spent time with, I miss them, just more engagement or, um, sharing of community use offerings? I was recently on their website, I was like, oh my gosh, I didn't know they had these two things, so just continuing to put a plug in for new programming.
Yeah, and, and I think what's happened there, um, is they offer so many awesome things and so many things, I think a lot of them get missed.
So maybe even just a reminder that it's available or something, just to promote it, thank you.
Yep.
Are you on their email distribution? Cause I get an email like almost every day of different programs.
I don't want an email every day. No, I don't think I am, Chris, actually, so it's a good one. But I happened to go on the website for something, and I was like, I didn't know they were offering that stem, whatever, and I was like, that's awesome.
Yeah, to, to community uses, you know, benefit or, you know, like I said, I'm just on that distribution list.
Sure.
And pretty much every day, if not twice a day, I'm, I'm seeing programs that they're offering, which is, I find it great.
I was just thinking, I see all the sports come through, but I wasn't seeing their programming, so just to
Yeah.
do that, thanks.
Yep.
So I had a question, but just to follow from what Meg said, this wasn't originally my thought, but, um, would it be possible to just have a standing link in Digital Backpack to Community Use?
Yeah.
That way, uh, that might be a way to always be directing people there, just a thought.
That's an easy, that's an easy one, yeah.
So that's just a thought, but my, uh, question was gonna be, so I looked through the survey results, so that was really great that you had almost 700 results over the summer.
Yeah.
Um, and thank you for also including the open feedback that people gave, cause I think that was really interesting to read. What is happening with that now, now that we have that data, how are we using it in the district?
Yeah, so some of it, you know, some of it has been put into practice, you know, like I mentioned, you know, trying to get away from seven emails a week and, and, and just getting one. Um, you know, some of it has been just talking it through with our, our leadership team. Um, at, at our leadership, uh, retreat this summer, we reviewed this and had some, you know, candid conversations around that. Um, and it's something that in, in another leadership meeting that we had this fall, we've had some conversations around, you know, communication practices. Um, and I think one of the things that we wanna also do is, is kind of push that, um, push that out to our staff as well. Um, because many times it's, you know, our teachers are our first line of communication. Um, so having some of those best practices of, of how to communicate in, in professional and open and honest ways. Um, and, and trying to grow and develop that, so that's something that we're looking to push. It's, you know, there's only, there's only so much, that, only so much time and only so much bandwidth for, for folks. So trying to pick the right spots as to when we can have some of those, uh, communication conversations.
Yeah, and just a thought, I don't know if, you know, take it or leave it, but if you were to do a similar survey next summer, I think as a parent, it would be really great to see. You know, last summer we elicited feedback, these are some of the changes we made, just to kind of circle back and show parents, you know, we are taking your feedback seriously, and these are the things that we're doing. Cause I think sometimes just as a community, it's, you know that you're giving information and it's hard to know what changes are made, because so many are, like you said, with administration and with staff, and parents don't always realize that this was done.
I think what I wanna do is actually do that survey, um, while school is still in session, while I think parents are a little bit more, uh, available and tuned into what's going on with the school. Um, and, you know, cause summer's not a great time to send out a survey. Um, but I wanted to get some information so I could get moving on things. I didn't wanna wait until September and then implement some changes. I knew I had a, a, you know, finite window to, to have some of these conversations and get some of this information out there, so. Um, I think in, in future surveys, it will happen during the school year. Yeah.
Yes, Mike. Again, thank you for all this. Um, recently the school committee passed, um, a advertising the school policy, make sure if you're aware. If you could just make sure that, you know, aligns with your procedures, that'd be awesome.
Yeah. I, I, I wasn't, I wasn't aware.
Yeah, I, I, essentially.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. It, it's, you know, I went through your procedures, it's, it's, it's complimentary. But it does do some guidelines saying, you know, what can be actually put into the schools, you know, and whatnot, supporting education, all that fun stuff, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, I don't see anything else, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, so this brings us to the community reuse revolving account discussion. Uh, this is back on the agenda, again, we've discussed this a few times in terms of, more specifically, the funding source of the director of transportation, and I had this back on here because I did spend some time this week talking to finance director. Try to get more of a background, because as we learned with community use in general, you talk to somebody at town hall, there's a backstory and a history. This was no different. Uh, what I learned though, what I was looking to learn, um, is what the purpose from the financial standpoint um, is behind the community use revolving account. So we know, as we've discussed before, using this account to pay for that salary is legal. It's, it's allowed to be done in the state, um, but what I learned from the, the finance director was that the spirit, if you will, of this account has, was put in place to fund or help fund anything related to community use. And, um, I think the disagreement that we've had here in the last probably month or so, and frankly, from the, um, from the set town side too, is that transportation is in no way related to community use. So the question then becomes, what do we do about it? Now that I think most of us understand this, and we all agree that it needs to be moved, the question becomes, what do we do with it? Um, moving forward and how do we, how do we work our way out of what we're doing now? So, um, looking at you guys, I assume you may have something to contribute? If you don't have more thoughts, but I wanted to pass it around.
Yeah, um, I mean, obviously I've been bringing this up every meeting, um, I think you captured it right, it's not, it's, it's legal. One confirmed it, Zach confirmed it, um, they both have this chart of accounts of what you can and can't spend, um, in a revolving account, but you know, the, the revolving account was created to support community use and all the expenditures, or most of the expenditures in that program. Um, so we're currently out of paying our transportation director out of the community use revolving account, which is funded from charging people to come and participate in the programs. Um, so to me, it's not at all in the spirit of that, it's, and I made this analogy, we may as well pay a few more people out of that account. It, and I'm being sarcastic, I don't think we should be paying anybody out of that account that's not directly associated with it. Um, and I just wanted to open up that discussion, if, if the majority here feels that's okay, I'm okay with that. I won't agree with it, but I'll, I'll, I'll accept the decision.
Um, it's, I, um. It's, I, I guess I've heard a lot about this over the past few months, we all have. From an accounting perspective, this is, do I consider just moving money around in accounts? So whether we move the money now, or we move it at the end of the year, it is a deficit, I think it's, you know, it's, it comes out the same, so I think, I'd like to hear from Wynn, but, you know, if we move it now, and, you know, there's, there's an issue, we can move it back. You know, if we don't move it now, and we can move it at the end of the year, then we can move it there. So to me, it's more of a semantic, so, you know, I, I'm fine with both ways either. Personally, I think we should just move it at this point. I'm tired of talking about it. And I'm also supportive, you know, so, because we can just change at the end of the year if there's an issue.
I'll just look for, to Wynn or to Zach for clarification, but I don't think we can move it from there into, into the operating budget.
I think we can during, if the school committee will to move. So the revolving account can serve as a supplement as the school budget, if we decided that it's supporting the education in general, then you can vote to move the money.
Yeah, so we could move it later, I guess. I wasn't, I wasn't under that impression, but I still think we should be spending that money on that program, and I think, you know, I've been saying it for four months, I think we, in this budget, we can find the money to pay the Transportation Director, and to your point, if we can't, we'll address it.
Make a motion.
At a future time.
You guys have any to add? Megan?
My only ask is going to be that we don't budget it there for next year, as we're headed into that budget season that we just.
I think that's, that for me is the biggest takeaway, because this was, this is another unexpected account to go to the general budget, and we've already cut multiple hundreds of thousands last year during the budget process.
And we recently changed the, or reallocated the position, so that was happened during this budget season, so.
Correct, and again, not that it wasn't predictable, because it's something we were talking about, but it's, a lot of our costs are fixed. We also have a lot of volatile accounts, like special education and transportation, that, again, and I've said this multiple times throughout the year, that it's going to be a tight budget year, where we have some flexibility in some revolving accounts still. The actual budget is very, very tight, and we have, you know, I'd say a typical, if not more, number of, you know, medical leaves and maternity leaves and things like that that put a strain on our, you know, sublines too, which is where some of the flexibility you see there. I'd rather measure twice and cut once, and do it later in the year, it would be my recommendation, with the understanding that we're going to absolutely budget for this, to put it into the operating budget for the 25, 26 school year. And if we can make an adjustment at the end of the year, let's absolutely do that. I'd hate to make two adjustments, one, shift it over, and because it's a tight year, then I have to shift it back, then just shift it over once, and I would be supportive of if we have the money shifting it over later in the year, rather than moving the money twice, potentially.
So you're saying we wouldn't move the money twice, we'd start paying the Transportation Director out of the operating budget, and if we have a shortfall, we'll move it over at the end of the year to cover it?
No, what I'm saying, kind of, no. What I'm saying is, I'd say continue paying it out of the revolving account, and if we have, like, money, say, like, once we get into like March or April, we have a much better sense of where we stand, then we would say, you know, some point in the spring, and one would have a better sense of the timeline, so I don't want to put words in your mouth at all, but just say, hey, it looks, we're looking pretty good, let's transfer the money from the general fund to the revolving account. And if it, and if we're, and if it's rough at the end of the year, let's say we have a few more, a couple more out-of-district placements than we were anticipating, then we don't make that transfer, but we do going forward, put the money, during the budget process, like, we've already talked about this, we're putting the Transportation Director's salary for 25, 26 into the general operating account. Now, I think if you want to move it twice potentially, you know, that's your purview, but I would, I would recommend, let's wait till the spring, and if we can move it, let's move it. And if we can't, we're going to be changing this for the 25, 26 school year anyways, because we know that the position is no longer tied to the Community Use revolving.
Is there an impact on Community Use if we do not move it now? So would it limit them in any way, like, operationally, or programs are offering?
Can't, well, we can't speak for the Director of Community Use, but I do know, obviously, we're.
The committee wasn't here.
We're.
We're in the shaking your head, so.
Uh, no, no impact on Community Use. It's just a number.
So Community Use would still be able to function as they want to?
Yes, they have a balance of $200, something thousand right now, it won't affect them. We're talking 68% of Jim's salary, which is a little less than $100,000.
Okay, so it is about, but it, but it's his salary from this point moving forward is what we're talking about, right? Because he's already been paid a perfect portion of it this year.
If that's the case, we will use the whole.
Oh, sorry, I was just trying to understand the numbers.
We can do it either way.
Okay.
Take it all of our, moving forward.
Okay, sure. Okay, got it, so like, probably, okay.
You know, I was going to say the same thing, Michael, just a second.
Question? Can we transfer from operating into the revolving account, or does that have to go through Town Meeting?
It's not common. I don't know, have to look it up.
So can we maybe get clarification, maybe not choose anything tonight, but get clarification whether or not we can move from operating into, into revolving, and get clarification that we can move from revolving, whether or not we can move from revolving into operating? Because I hear Kevin's saying we'll measure twice, cut once, but I'm looking at it opposite, where we could be paying it out of operating, and if we're short at the end of the year, and if it's legal, we could transfer from Community Use.
Can I make a motion to pass over pending information, John?
Okay, motion by Megan?
I'll second it.
I'll give the second to John, he was quick there, we're going to go back to discussion. I wanted to make one comment on that, in my discussions with Zach. I don't remember which direction we were talking about, but he said, well, Michael said it's a simple journal entry. I don't know if he was thinking about it in accounting terms or legality terms, so we can certainly clarify that, and that's something you can talk to him with, obviously. I'll leave that for you. And just the comment on the impact of Community Use, there's, as Wynn said, there's no impact, in my opinion, to how they've been operating forever. But the impact that is there is we're taking away money that could be otherwise used for them to grow their program. That's the spirit of what John's asking for, and that's why we're talking about this, is the more money we can leave in their account, the more flexibility they have to grow and expand to. So that's the ultimate goal here, is to keep their money in their hands.
That's exactly, that was exactly my point. And last year, there was a period of time where Community Use was doing very, very, very scary well.
Right. So, to wrap this one up, the thought that I had with this, and it seems like we came to the same kind of conclusion, is number one, to figure out what our options are, including, if everybody's okay with this, asking when to take some time to get more comfortable with whether or not we can absorb this. Whether we say in January or February, do we start paying this salary out of this spot? It would be good to, I think, give her a little more time to look at it and get more comfort on where our budget's going. And that would give time to, to figure out the rest of this as well. I know we have two more meetings, and then it's January, so perhaps looking for an update on that early January, is that something everybody's okay with, or we want to try to bring that sooner?
Okay with that.
All right, so we'll just, we'll just.
Vote on the motion that was raised.
Yeah, we have a board discussion piece, and the only thing just to consider is if, if the answers become that we cannot move monies around, then what? So. And I know we can't answer that, but I'm just saying, if we can't, if we can't, then remember, then we can't, we can't backfill Community Use. So we've got to be careful of how long we delay this.
Right, so, to finish that one up, your motion was to table this.
Correct.
Until we get more information, and I think the more information was just discussed, so, again, motion by Megan, and second by John, all in favor of tabling this for more information. It's unanimous, thank you. All right, that brings us to.
Pass.
Pass, got it. We will skip over the policy adoption and vote. All right, on to the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
All right, just give me one second to note that forward. All right, so we've got two updates for the committee this evening. The first is on my goals. In your packet is an outline of my goals for the 24, 25 school year. I'm not going to go into great detail, because we've discussed this on a couple of other occasions. Each goal includes a brief description of the goal, key actions, evidence and outcomes, rough target completion dates, target indicators, and the strategic focus areas. The goals are focused on the following topics, the Milford High School complex eligibility period, equity audit, the development of an employee handbook, multi-tiered systems of support, and literacy. Again, it is critically important to note that each goal represents the work of educators across the district, community members, school committee members, school building committee members, students, staff members, consultants, and others. Many of these goals require multiple rounds of feedback and iteration, and is the work of many. Education is a collaborative effort, and these goals reflect that spirit of collaboration and teamwork. The target indicators, again, I'm not going to go into great detail there either, but it's assessment, environment, engagement, continuous learning, and shared vision. And actually added, I have one additional target indicator, just based on the goals. The strategic focus areas, again, for the district are teaching and learning, equity and access, social, emotional learning, professional culture, and the new one is facilities, finance, and resource management. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, comments?
Quickly. I know that this is comprehensive, and thank you very much. I think something to consider in the future is, you know, it's already late November, and we're looking at goals for this year, you know. Granted, these are long-term. I think what we should do as a committee is start looking ahead at, after our budget season, and knowing what our budget is, is then we, then we, then we create goals based on the budget, right? And based on items that we put forth in the budget that are going to help drive our school system forward, right? So next spring, we're developing, after the budget, we're developing goals for our superintendent that, that way, on September 1st, when school starts, we're moving ahead. I think we're, we're way behind right now as a committee, and I think that we can, if we refocus on that, not saying that these aren't good goals, but I think that some of these may carry over in the springtime, we should definitely consider budget goals, and then implement into the school year.
I was just going to.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thanks, Kevin, for taking the time to sort of incorporate the feedback that we've given you over the past few months, in terms of, you know, more specific measurements and the evidence, so they look good overall to me, thank you.
Do you need to vote on this? I think we could, just for the formality of saying that we accepted these goals, we're ready to move on, so, we're ready for that, I'll take a motion.
Motion to accept these goals?
Motion by Brendan, second by Chris, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
All right, and the MSBA eligibility period update's pretty quick. There are three items to complete for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which are the maintenance and capital planning, which is due on January 28th, the enrollment meeting, which will be scheduled by the MSBA, and they've got apparently a number of districts in the queue ahead of us when they approve us into the eligibility period, there's a number of other districts, and it's kind of on a rotating basis. And the MSBA contact will be in touch when they're going to schedule that meeting, so there's really nothing else to do there. The feasibility study agreement, which will be executed by April 28th, and this is also scheduled by the MSBA, so that's something that we're going to, that's going to be in the spring, that's something we have to wait, wait on them to, to schedule that for agreement.
Sorry, can you repeat the first one?
Maintenance and capital planning.
When's that due?
January 28th.
And is that coming here first?
Yes.
And on the feasibility study, that's not with a third party, that's with the MSBA?
That's with the MSBA, correct.
And then we put it out for bid?
I believe so, I believe that's the process.
Do we know a timing for that piece?
I think we're going to learn a little bit more about that in the next couple of months, but the eligibility period kicks into the feasibility period, like, kind of right afterwards, basically. So I would say either the summer or the fall will kick into that process.
Okay. I'd be curious to just understand a little bit, Chris, maybe how the committee, the building committee, is thinking about, like, where there's any potential to reduce time? Like, I'm sensitive to some of the things that Tim's saying about end of life, and like, we know the boilers, just any opportunity where it's like, we don't have to wait, or there's an opportunity to do something faster, I think it'd be prudent for us in terms of the dollars we're looking to expend, to make sure that that's.
My sense is for those two pieces, they're driven by the MSBA.
Yeah, there's nothing. Okay, that's helpful to know.
So, you know, the deadlines, we've hit or exceeded all the deadlines.
Okay.
The big piece of this one really is that vote, and that was done, you know, months and months and months ago.
Great.
So like, you know, they know the town is supporting it.
Okay.
They've received all of our information, it's all been vetted by, you know, numerous people, so.
Okay.
I feel good about everything we've done so far.
Yeah.
I think some of it, we just have to kind of follow the process, unfortunately or unfortunately.
I know there's been some more towns sort of navigating the process, do we have any more updates on cost of feasibility study to know, like, know we're definitely covered in terms of what we think we're doing?
I think we're still in the right ballpark, I'll let Michael jump into it if he can.
Yeah, I, we haven't looked at the price, but I can tell you what Kevin said, the MSBA at this part drives, so we've done as much as we can to get ahead.
Awesome.
So we're not hitting the wall of the state.
Got it, that's great, thank you.
So, yeah, and then as far as feasibility, yeah, I haven't looked at it, I don't think anybody else has.
Just curious, okay.
We're focused on the enrollment stuff right now, so.
Where we came in, we came in with, I think, a number that's going to be, comfortable is probably not the right word, but I think realistic, reasonable.
Okay.
And put us in a position where we're not going to have to go back to town and say, hey, we need another 50 grand or 100.
And that's the only piece, Kevin, right? Because we can approve so much, and we can do it quickly, but that piece would take longer, so just to make sure we.
They were comfortable when we did it, too.
Great, okay.
That our number was, you know, they said they couldn't direct us, but they kind of showed us all the other ones, and what was in the, kind of, the hopper, for lack of a better term.
Yep, thank you.
And I'm pretty confident that the people at the table for the building committee are going to really scrutinize, you know, what the proposal will be and the money that needs to be spent, so.
Okay, awesome.
I think that, the money that we have, yes, is adequate, but I think that we may, and there might be some buffer there, but I think that every penny that we can save, based on the people at that table, they will do that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you, thanks, Matt.
Anything else on this? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
On to the report of the School Business Administrator.
We have two warrants this week totaling $181,425.49.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Megan to approve the warrant, second by Robin. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous.
Thank you. We're not able to update you on budget this week, but would you have the personnel update for you to review?
Just one question, Matt, and I know you're passing over the budget update once, that's fine. When I went through the last budget update, I don't know that I saw the revolving accounts included. Could you make sure that they're all included in the next budget update, just given that's a topic that we're discussing?
The balance, okay.
Balances, please, thank you.
All right, no problem. It's my favorite attempt, on to the consent agenda. There are currently four items listed on it, and nobody's said anything yet, so I think that's a good sign. So we'll be taking one vote tonight to pass the consent agenda, which includes the following, the approval of minutes from the November 7th, 2024 regular session, that is approval and release, the approval only of the October 24th, 2024 executive session, and then also approval of grants and gifts, which I did not see any, and I don't have the on my desk.
I'd make a motion with an edit, if that's allowed, on the minutes of November 7th, regular session, item number seven. On the consent agenda, it says that three were opposed, which was Megan, Matt, and myself, and we weren't opposed, if I remember right, we abstained.
So say that, President, who are the three people?
It's Megan, myself, and Matt on consent agenda vote, item number seven.
Abstained, they didn't, they didn't vote against it?
Yeah, we didn't oppose it, we just, we each had missed one of the meetings, so